Can we do a roll call, please?
Thanks, John.
Here.
Albert.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Tanya Moody.
Here.
Karla.
Here.
Okay. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment, so we will move on to our discussion items, the first one of which-
I have a really quick comment, a board comment, if I may. I just wanted to recognize our social workers. It is National Social Worker Week, and I just wanted to thank all District 65's social workers for their incredible work, extra hours that they give to our children and our schools, so just wanted to take some time to recognize our wonderful social workers in our district.
Oh, thank you for that, absolutely. Anybody else? Okay, then we will start off with our community schools update. Joaquin.
Yay! Thank you.
Which was delayed from last month, so thank you for accommodating the shift.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Our community schools coordinator, Rosa Schreiber, will be joining us, as well as our grant writer, Kim Kelly. As a transition, the community schools memo was sent February 11th. Thank you for the time slot today.
Joaquin, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, thank you. The community schools memo was sent on February 11th, and so with that memo, we're going to talk to a few pieces. So Kim is going to start with speaking to us about the history of community schools, just briefly, and then Rosa will be speaking to us about community schools currently, and I'll be speaking about the future of community schools.
Okay.
Hi. So, as many of you know, YOU was a lead partner for, I think it was four years, for the community school work that was primarily funded through their fundraising and then dollars that came through the United Way's Community School Initiative that is regional. And it was about a year ago this time that they told us, no, it was two years ago now, I think, that they told us that they were going to discontinue their funding. I think essentially they were no longer going to be funded by the United Way because the United Way was directing their dollars in another way. So they decided they were going to end their community school work entirely as an organization. So they gave us a lot of notice, and they were going to end it in April of last year was when it was set to end. So we did have time to come up with a plan, a transition plan, and it was last summer, or the summer before, that it was the same time the Cradle to Career released their initiative of the $50,000 grants. They had three of them, and so we did apply, and we were funded, and we framed it as transitional dollars to fill a gap between YOU ending in April and then the district picking up the work, and to think about what direction we were going to go so that we would have time to do that. So that grant came in in November, which is an awkward time for a grant to come in if you're hiring a position, because we wrote it to hire a resource coordinator or community school manager, and then developed some partnerships with, we wrote it with the Metropolitan Family Services and the Moran Center. And so we had hoped to fill it by January. That also happened to hit at a time where the district was taking some time to consider what new positions would be created, so that continued to delay the process of hiring. And we decided to move forward with the hire, and that position was filled by Rosa then in June. So that's pretty much the up-to-date background of up until when Rosa joins the team.
And I started in June, and since I started, I've been trying to familiarize myself with what's been done, what was done in the two years prior by YOU and by the other community schools' resource coordinators, relationship building, getting to know the community in the three schools, so Oakden, King Arts, and CHUT, also trying to maintain the programs that were already in existence, was the Healthy Kids Food Market, and then the Legal Clinic, which I worked with Joan from the Moran Center to expand. And then we've been focusing our efforts at Oakden. We've brought in a couple of programs since then, and doing a needs assessment and trying to build our version of the community schools model that can be sustainable at the other two schools as well.
Rosa, do you mind speaking briefly about the actual programs that are currently in place?
Sure. So we have the Healthy Kids Market, which is a partnership with the Greater Chicago Food Depository, and then the Legal Clinic with the Moran Center. At Oakden, we have College Mentor for Kids, which is a partnership with Northwestern. It's a one-on-one mentoring program, and that serves 24 students right now. We are starting up Girls on the Run, hopefully by the end of the month, and then we also have a partnership with the Family Institute, and I've been meeting with them. We've been in a partnership with them since November. They are going to be conducting after-school groups, and also based on the needs assessment that we're doing, possible programming for parents within the school.
Thank you. There's a few coordinations that Rosa has made also to connect us with the Erie Family Center, so Alberto Ortega, Rosa has met with him last week, and then meeting with Kim Hammack, even though Books and Breakfast focuses on schools that are not Title I funded, thinking of creative ways of how to start Books and Breakfast at one of our most needed schools to have it, that is under the Title I umbrella, so Rosa's going to be collaborating with Kim Hammack and brainstorming away with Kim Kelly of how to develop funding for Books and Breakfast at one of our most needed schools.
What school is that?
That would be, so if we were to decide today, we're thinking of Oakden, and then the powers of Rosa and community schools. When I came in in October, there was a transition time from when she was hired until I was hired in October, and so this is the breadth of the work that Rosa, speaking of, is in the last five months. And so I just want to make sure I point that out, because that has a lot to do for one person as far as the connections that she's made for Oakden, for King, and for CHUT. When I came in, it was obvious to me, based on the collaborative nature of the team at Oakden and the needs around the community, from the meeting that I had with Andalieve and Joyce, focusing on Rosa's time, two days a week, at Oakden to really do wraparound services at one of our schools that need us most. The future of community schools is, in my perspective, based on the task of being the Director of Equity, Family, and Community Engagement, has a lot to do with the larger entity that we partner with. So knowing the past of the partnership of YOU and 21st Century Funds going to YOU, wondering what partnership we would want to lean into next, whether that would be YMCA, whether that would be Cradle to Career, and even though the magical powers of Rosa and Rosa and Schreiber is immense, for us to have a true community schools model for the district is not sustainable for one person. And she's doing the best she can, as well as the support from myself, or support from Kim, and support from Ellen as well. And so in looking forward, we wonder, this team wonders what that would look like related to doing a comprehensive scale of community schools. There's a lot of models that exist. A lot of models suggest that there would be one community schools coordinator at each school. Models also suggest that you would have an outer entity that's a large body, right, like YOU, like mentioned before, or Cradle to Career, or YMCA. So this is where community schools is at. I know a board member had emailed questions late this afternoon. I was in meetings, I was not able to respond to those, but if we want to talk about those, that'll be welcomed.
Okay, great. Questions?
Yeah, those questions, I'm guessing, were mine that you're referring to. So I think, just even hearing the presentation, which I appreciate the breadth of investment and the blood work and time that it takes to coordinate this many services, my question from our larger district level is, what is the strategic vision that we have for leveraging the community schools model? And all of these are wonderful opportunities for children and families, but the question that I have is, how is this aligned with our strategic priorities? And I noticed that you mentioned the needs assessment that you're working on, so what is the information that we have about the needs and assets at each of these buildings, and how that's aligned with our larger strategic priorities as a district, and what we actually have planned in terms of partnerships or outlook for long-term planning, in terms of what lead partners we might pursue, what funding we might pursue, what programs we're pursuing, et cetera, to really leverage the model? I think that's my broader question in the series of questions that I email. And the spirit of those questions is really not to necessarily get them all answered via email, but to give you all a heads-up of some of the questions that might come up in discussion tonight.
So, in speaking for myself, I really appreciate those questions, and I'm also speaking for we?
Oh, sure, yes.
So, the reality is, we're doing the best of what we've been given. And so is there a strategic plan moving forward? There has not been one developed yet from this team because of the reality of forecasting, the projections of contributions that we would have related to funding, and what to do at scale. So a lot of what you mentioned, your questions, are things that we're working on, based on the team being fairly new, and doing the best we can for what we have in this district currently.
From where I sit, though, there's a significant alignment between the types of services that we're trying to provide through the model we have and our equity agenda, and our agenda around really engaging community and families in our schools, making our schools a more welcoming place, and providing services that many people in the community have access to, but some do not. So there's a broad strategic reason to move forward. I think what our colleagues are saying is, we've got to think about how we find the right partners to be able to scale this up so that we have not only one place, but several places. And that's the dilemma we face as YOU pivoted out.
So I-
Oh, I was just going to say, I think one of the challenges was that even though YOU was a partner with some duration of work, I wouldn't say that they left a very large footprint for the work when they ended, which has been one of the challenges. And, you know, we, for a period of time, Ismaelis was basically taking the lead on the grant fund with the partnership with Metropolitan and the Moran Center, and really what that, I think, demonstrated, in my opinion, as someone that knows community schools, is how important it is to have a designated person, that those partnerships were limited by the lack of capacity to manage them, that they really need to have someone on-site, someone really shepherding those relationships.
Absolutely.
I know principals want to do that, but the truth is, is that they just don't have the space on their plates. And so I think the investment in making sure that we're following a model, we have designated people, and not trying to pin together different was really very obvious, that the district needs to invest in the particular model of having a resource coordinator and doing that work.
One thing to highlight, so in working with the team, you know, even though it's not, I feel like it's connected to community schools, what we do with the Family Welcome Center, so it's officially welcoming families, it's just we haven't had the ribbon cut yet. It's coming soon, y'all, all right? But the work that Ellen has done with the team of Rosa and I and Kim, GED classes running, as well as DED classes, workshop series for life skills and resources, and community classes being taught by our very own Sergio Hernandez. So that is not in a school, but community partnerships as far as ensuring that we're welcoming families in, and doing the best we can.
And there's also the Moran Center, Legal Clinic was there on Saturday as well, I was there.
Correct, on Saturday.
I have a question from the memo. In terms of outcomes that you are going to evaluate for searching out funding beyond the two years that we have, what are the outcomes that you're going to be looking at, and do you anticipate starting to look now for additional funding, or are you waiting to see outcomes? And what are those outcomes?
So I think a couple of things. One, in the strategic, the strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan, we said that we would draw lessons learned from the YOU experiment to figure out how to move forward. So part of the lessons learned has evolved into our own signature on what Rosa is doing so fantastically in moving forward, that there are different services that, if provided to community members, community members will benefit from. So that's one piece. The second piece is that we have to, as a team, come up with what we see, given the model that we're executing, as the outcome, so that we can then go forward to raise some money. The final thing is the raising the money, and that's, we're not there yet, and I think that's our next stage, which is to sit down and knock our heads together and say, if not an organization like YOU, then what other organizations can we team with, and is it feasible to team with another organization? I think we have significant enough information and data from the YOU experience, and I believe, based on how we look at what we're doing, and both the numbers of people, we can probably do some sort of survey, just survey their satisfaction in the services, how much are people really accessing, and how much are these services really helping people? I think if we can harvest those data, those are important data to then go to a potential funder to say that, you know, we've got an important program here that needs attention.
And I think- A question that I had that we've discussed before is, how have you pursued information about models of delivering community schools in order to set the vision for how it is connected with our strategic efforts? Such as reaching out to the National Center for Community Schools. They provide technical assistance, they also have, do, I believe, site visits. You know, how have you educated yourself about the community school model in order to provide guidance and vision for how we're leveraging it internally, so that we can tie it closely to our strategic priorities?
Right, so I've provided some level of access to the National Community Schools Initiative, and then the work that we've done, and I think, Rosa, are you participating in some of the community efforts around the city?
Yeah.
So, by the way, what I've done is given license for the staff to go as far and wide as possible to actually learn. Ismaelis, when she was here, was doing a lot of that work beforehand, and so we put a stake in the ground, and we were also working with the model that YOU helped to create, somewhat in partnership with us, but also to help to create, which was based on national models of community schools. Rosa, I interrupted you, though.
No, I was just going to say, I'm with Acnow Illinois, who used to be the Federation of Community Schools, and also Northern Illinois Community Schools Network, which are suburban community schools, and they provided a lot of help and resources. And also with West Chicago, they've been doing this for 11 years, and they're finally fully up and running, so that's a place we want to definitely go visit.
So, the other thing that I just want to add, the community schools road has been rocky with us. We started it a while back, it's true, with YOU, and there were board members who were very involved with that. Rosa is, I think, the fourth facilitator at CHUT, and the second at King Arts. It had begun, actually, under my watch, and then it went to Maria Allison, and then it went to Ismaelis, and now it's with Joaquin. So it's been a rocky place in terms of our work, in terms of continuity, in terms of probably some of the direction that we have wanted to go. I believe that it's in a great place today, and that we can really move forward with it, and that the vision and the work is there, and Rosa's done some great work on this, and, you know, really, from the very beginning, last summer she was here, jumping in and looking to learn the program. She also brings the experience to make some of the changes that we need to have. But this has been a tough road, I'd say partly funding, I'd say partly figuring out what our program was going to look like. I think our commitment is to certainly the aspect of the family and community engagement piece of the strategic plan, but it's not been without some of its own difficulties. So I just wanted to bring a little bit of that history.
I appreciate that, and I just want to preface that this is not criticism. This is not a directed criticism of the efforts that you all have put into the work. I think I'm passionate about the community school model, because that's what I did before I had my first child, and I believe in the model. And I also believe that if we're saying that we're doing it, we're setting up a certain expectation, and I want us to be able to live up to that expectation, and not put unreasonable expectations on someone's shoulders that are not funded and supported, right? And so these questions are about how are we truly leveraging the model? It certainly is integrated with many of our priorities. It is about connecting services within the core instructional model, the enrichment opportunities, the health and wellness needs in a building in order to remove barriers to learning. And I believe that the need for that recognition has certainly been demonstrated, and I believe that the commitment of our board to considering the needs of a whole child have certainly been communicated, but I don't know that we've provided the resources and supports necessary, and the leadership and vision necessary for us to be able to carry out on that promise. And I would love it if we could, and I think that, I guess, some of the questions that I'm asking are, what are those gaps, and what can we do in order to fill them? I'm hearing that part of that is taking time to do some corrective work, reflecting back on how many shifts and changes have occurred, and how that affects continuity. I'm hearing that funding is part of the issue, having enough funding to provide the proper staffing, and also some of the expertise that comes from having lead partner agency to partner with in doing this work. Our out-of-school-time folks have a tremendous expertise to provide in partnership with the expertise that we have in delivering in-school instruction, and it sounds like those are some things that we need to leverage if we want to be able to deliver this properly in order to meet some of the needs that we know, to meet some of the needs and benefit from some of the assets in our community and in our schools.
So were we ever part of, so then I really appreciate, again, Rosa, the work that you're doing and connecting with ABC, and then the Asociación de Familias Hispanas, the PTAs. So again, and that needs assessment's going to be critical as we deliberate as leadership, right, around how, you know, what vision we have, right? So it kind of rests on us and on our leadership to kind of have that vision, and like you're saying, Anya, I mean, we really need to align this work with our larger equity vision in regards to what, you know, what is it that we want to accomplish with that vision? So that needs assessment's going to be very critical in regards to how we deliberate and really try to help set a vision for how this moves forward. Again, for me, a 21st Century Community Learning Center, again, it's this, you know, something in my imagination, not my imagination, my wife was part of it, was part of a partner institution that was in Pilsen with a school called Whittier, so again, it had programs that ran from seven in the morning till seven at night, and again, it offered all of these really great resources for families, and, you know, academic supports as well as job trainings. So the model in and of itself, I think, is very critical for a lot of families, and again, you know, schools being these safe havens for many families, again, lend itself to providing these incredible services, to, again, you know, empower folks to achieve something in their lives that they usually aren't afforded. So again, I personally really believe in that model, and again, I was just looking at the ISB website, and I know that, I think, you know, again, it's all dependent on funding, but maybe, you know, as we think about exploring, you know, funding, you know, let's think about some of the 21st Century, you know, CCLC funding that hopefully gets refunded through the next budget cycle, and maybe they offer an RFP, and hopefully we can apply for it to continue some of this work.
I can speak to that. They actually just renewed the last five-year, and they have not made it competitive. They had a competitive application FY '19, which we did not have any schools that were eligible to apply at that point, and then the cohort that just was going to come up for like an FY '20, they just refunded it automatically as they had done with the cohort before. So YOU is locked in now for eligible schools for the next, I think, three for that one cohort, and then five for the upcoming.
But not necessarily for community schools?
No, but in the state of Illinois, the 21st Century dollars are what really drive many of the community school initiatives, not all of them, but it's really the core money, and team reach is another source. But other than that, there's not a lot of state funding that's available. They do, there has been a community school line in the state budget for years now that the Federation had codified, but it's not been funded. It was funded for a quick minute, and then when Pritzker came in, he talked about it in his campaign, and then it disappeared. So we were hopeful. And then there's the Healthy Communities dollars, which we don't qualify for, which many districts get automatically, but we don't qualify for because of our poverty rate. YOU did write for it, there's a community-based one, and they received those funds to run some summer programs. So at the state level, it's not a lot, but that doesn't mean there are a lot of opportunities in the private sector and foundation.
How are we working with YOU? Are they providing those 21st Century programs in our buildings, and have we had any conversations about how that programming is strategically utilized?
That's a great question. I think it's developing.
I have a meeting next week or the following week with the executive director to touch pace on where they are and where they're going, so that can be part of it.
I think in the past, they'd been very hesitant to look at those programs relationally, and I'm not 100% clear why that was. It was something that I had advocated for, but they have new leadership, and I think there are probably opportunities to kind of push a little bit.
Well, it's all the same, children and families, right?
Exactly right. Exactly right.
So if we're thinking about the needs and assets of the children and families that they essentially wrote that grant to support, I think that it's in our interest to talk about how we're doing that together and how that's aligned.
I think that's right.
So I think I hear a lot, I think, you know, having been one of the board members who was on the community schools leadership council or whatever it was called early on, you know, I think there's a lot of belief, like Anya said, in the model. I think there's clearly a lot of research out there and examples out there that when done with fidelity, it can really transform a school and a community in a positive way and in a way that is really aligned with our larger equity vision for the district. But I do have concerns about the fidelity with which we are implementing the model and knowing that, you know, there have been all of these external forces that, and changes that have kind of interrupted it along the way. So it feels like we're kind of at a decision point with how we move forward and, you know, I think there are certainly a lot of, you know, thinking like the healthy foods market and the partnership with the Marantz Center, I think there, and this, I think it's new this year, right, the, with Northwestern, the one-on-one mentoring like that, from what I've heard of it, it's a really great program. So I think there are elements that we would want to keep and sustain regardless of what we call it, if it's community schools or if it's just some way of continuing to support, you know, family engagement and support wraparound services for families. You know, it feels like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it feels like a lot of this is going to depend on who and if there is a lead partner organization. I know we mentioned YMCA, I don't know if they've actually expressed any interest in being the lead partner organization. I don't know if there are other entities that would even take, so I guess I would encourage, and I know too, the other point that I wanted to make is when I was on the leadership council, you know, one thing that we struggled with was determining what are the outcome metrics that we are going to look at. You know, some of the things like, you know, how many families are accessing the healthy food market and things like that, those were easy, but some of the other metrics that we wanted to see, particularly related to student outcomes, it was harder to kind of figure out what that connection was. So I guess, you know, it seems like moving, before determining how to move forward with this, I think we really need to get some clarity on, A, is there a transition option available to us? Because I don't think it's sustainable to just keep it in-house and I don't think that's even, not even how the model is supposed to work. There is supposed to be an external agency that is executing. And then, you know, being clear about what our, our goals are with it. And I'm not sure that we've ever really been 100% clear on that. And then I think once we have those in place, it might be easier to figure out, is this something we move forward with? Do we pivot it another way and just keep the elements that we have and focus on maybe expanding those into other schools, but not calling it community schools, so.
Is that something that might come out of the needs assessment?
Some kind of theory of change?
Like the overall, A is what you're doing, something that we want to be doing, what needs to happen to sustain it, is it through community partnerships, is it through, I mean, is that, is the needs assessment that broad?
No, the needs assessment is more just what parents need, what they feel they need and what they.
So it will give us really important input and data from stakeholders and what we need to do is then leverage that into what would a, what would a strategic plan for community schools look like within our larger strategic directions? And then we have to call the question. And I think, to be honest, to call the question, not to say that these aren't important services, they're absolutely important, but to call the question on to what extent can we sustain this without a lead partner and if we can't, then how else can we do some of the really important work?
I want to just call out that for a needs and asset assessment, that we also have other school data that would be a useful complement to that and as much of that school data is available, I would argue that it would be really critical to assessing what the needs and assets in the building are. Survey data from professionals, outcome data from children, five essentials data, there's, we have copious amounts of school data that I think as someone who worked for a lead partner agency was really difficult to access and one of the things that I know about resource coordinator position is, one, it's an incredibly hard position to fill, it's incredibly taxing, so kudos to you for doing it, but
Doing it at face holes.
Also that it's incredibly difficult, some, it has historically been difficult to get the data necessary in order to inform the kind of theory of change information that one needs and I think it was of us to be able to provide that.
And I've always felt that there's a lot of information that exists in the buildings, right? Kind of like what you were talking about, like social workers have a sense, they're connecting with people and I think some of the work that Rosa has been doing around building those relationships to get that access to the information. Because, you know, the last year that King was functioning as a community school under Y O U, there was a lot of time spent on surveys and then that didn't allow for a lot of time to actually implement. And so, you know, I worry about getting a little caught up sometimes in trying to nail some things down when it's, there's really, it's a flow, right? It's an ongoing, it sort of continues to inform itself as the programs are running. And so that's what I see happening now is that, you know, things are being offered, you kind of throw it out into the water and see what the response is like, hey, people are coming to this, but this is actually not really working, so we need to go. So there's a little bit of that, which I feel like is happening as well, which in my experience has always been important to the work is kind of how things happen.
Any other questions or comments?
We appreciate the comments, we have a good agenda to pursue.
Thank you very much for the.
Thank you very much. And thank you again for coming back this month to actually give the presentation, appreciate that.
I'll miss you again next month.
Anytime. You're invited back anytime you want. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next discussion item, the MTSS update. I think Donna Cross will be joining us and Stacy, if you want to.
So the last two presentations of the night, one is focused on MTSS and one is focused on literacy. Both, I think, are pretty well-placed based on a follow-up conversation from the District 65 202 board meeting from last week. It's an opportunity for really us to frame two very important lanes of work that are happening in District 65. MTSS, as Donna will really cover, addresses the full range of instruction within District 65, our tier-one core instruction, tier-two interventions connected to that tier-one core curriculum instruction, and then tier-three interventions which take place in kind of greater frequency, smaller groups for students that are further away from accessing that tier-one instruction. So Donna will provide a general, kind of an update on where we are with our MTSS work in District 65 and Elizabeth will follow with an update on our literacy work in K3 focused on our winter assessment data.
All right, here we go. Jump right in. I love this quote, I think it definitely explains the work immediately. The quality of a school as a learning community can be measured by how effectively it addresses the needs of its struggling students. I stand by that. I think when we address the needs of our students who are struggling the most, the ones who need us the most, that's when we're most successful. So District 65 is committing to improving outcomes for all students and especially accelerating learning and student outcomes for our students of color. This is based off of John Hattie's research and if you look, response intervention is one of the top tiers of what moves student learning. It's one of the most effective practices in improving outcomes for all students. Where, I know, where MTSS incorporates RTI, so if you've heard of RTI, response intervention, it has not gone anywhere. It is just a part of MTSS. MTSS meaning multi-tiered system of support. Where MTSS goes a little bit further is it's more proactive than it is reactive. Response intervention is, okay, we're gonna, a kid fails and then we put a lot of stuff in place and then we see how they respond to that. What MTSS does is it is proactive and doesn't let students fail. It starts with a universal screener, which makes predictive outcomes of where students will possibly be and we immediately start intervening before students fail. So what is it? So the overall goal is to accelerate and maximize student academic and social-emotional outcomes through collaborative, data-informed problem-solving to provide strategic supports and high-quality instruction. That is a long-worded way of saying, we use data to inform our instruction and inform where we put supports, where supports are needed. Support doesn't necessarily just mean interventions instructionally, it also means behaviorally, it means allocating resources to where they need to be allocated based on data, everything and also professional learning. So it's not just kids, it's also adults. Adults get differentiated learning based off of what they need. MTSS is everything. Everything falls under the MTSS umbrella. Everything from response intervention, from social-emotional learning, technology, curriculum design, PBIS, collaborative teamwork, everything falls under MTSS. I will show up at custodial meetings because that's everything. MTSS is everything. So these are the pillars that support MTSS. One is shared leadership and collaboration. So we have problem-solving teams that are made up of specialists, psychologists, social workers, principals, teachers, special education teachers and general education teachers to collaboratively come and problem-solve about students and groups of students who may not be performing where we need them to perform. We find out root causes and then we allocate resources, whether it be staff or time or instructional measures, to reach students. That's all anchored on the problem-solving process, I'll talk to you in the next one. Our curriculum instruction, we're consistently looking at, is the curriculum that we are providing aimed at all of our students and is our instruction, we're changing our instruction to meet the needs of the students that are in front of us. Assessment is a huge part of this. One, we use our universal screeners, it's the three times a year, quick snapshots of where students are in relation, in relation to grade level benchmarks and Common Core standards. For students who are falling below the 25th percentile, we want to utilize diagnostic assessments to really find out, really where is that particular area, the skill deficit that may be there? When we design interventions and put those in place, we're progress monitoring on a regular basis to see if those interventions are working. And then, of course, we have our summative outcomes. Did we actually meet where our goal was? Family community engagement, which I'm really glad that Community in Schools was talking about this today, that's one area where we're trying to build, the more we have parents and community involved. So one, community providing additional resources for us to allocate for our students and family partnerships and providing those interventions as well. And then finally, continuous improvement and professional learning. We never stop learning and we're constantly getting better and again, we use data to drive So this is our triangle. MTSS is academics and behavior, it's not just academics, so it includes our social-emotional and our academic pieces. The tier-one, which you'll see in green, is about 80% of our students should be successful with just tier-one level supports. So just tier-one level instruction, just tier-one level social-emotional supports. Then we have about 10% or so will fall in the tier-two, which is our yellow, and they will require, so they're layered supports, they'll require tier-one and then in addition to smaller group instruction or additional like social-emotional supports, like our state groups. And then we have FEW, which is about, you know, 5% or so. And that is for intensive intervention, usually it's one-on-one, five days a week, so we intensify the time and the duration and then make the groups a lot smaller. In the middle, you'll see our problem-solving process, it's a four steps. We don't just use it for MTSS, we use it for everything. The first step is defining the problem. What's the problem? That's usually the easiest part. We're able to look at our universal screeners and our data and figure out, all right, we figured out who has, who has some deficits. And then the second part is analyzing, finding the root cause, why is that problem actually happening? That may require an additional diagnostic assessment, that may require some observation, but we really want to find out why is it happening? The reason to do that is, the third is to implement, that's when we create and develop a plan and we implement it with fidelity. We really want to know what the problem is and the root cause because we don't want to provide an intervention that is not strategically targeted to the need of the student. And then finally, we evaluate the response to intervention. How did the student respond to the supports that we had in place? We just keep doing that. So this is what MTSS looks like in District 65 and I'm just going to walk through a few little key points for us today. One, the big jump that we did this year is finding a new tool for MTSS. The tool that we had previously, MTSS Explorer, was not meeting the needs of our staff and was not supporting the process, if anything, it was a barrier to the process. So the role last year with the MTSS advisory council was to vet a lot of tools and we landed on branching minds and I'll talk about that in a moment. Second is training and support. We have to make sure that any expectations that we're placing on staff, we're able to train them on how to use the tool, but also the process of MTSS in general. Step three is right now, we're building capacity in school leaders and teams and in staff through safe practice. Whenever there's something new, there is some change management in there, not only providing the differentiated support for staff, but also allowing staff to, I guess, sandboxing the tool a bit, jump in, create plans, make mistakes, that's okay, we can delete them if we need to, just really getting staff to build this as part of their practice. And then finally, monitoring progress with fidelity and continuous improvement, that's where we are now. So step one for finding an MTSS tool, we needed something that was user-friendly, something that actually was a support and collaboration and collective responsibility. We know that our students see a lot of different staff members during the day, especially as we get to the older groups that the departmentalize, they're seeing a lot of different teachers, but there's a lot of different staff that sees our students and we want to make sure that they're all of our kids. We're not pushing kids out because they're not fitting a particular instructional method, we're adjusting our instruction in order to support the students in front of us. We needed something that was longitudinal, something that can keep plans for years upon years upon years. So if I'm a fifth-grade teacher, I want to be able to see what happened in fourth grade, what supports were in place, how did the student respond to those supports? So I can start day one, I already know Johnny, I already know what to do and I can go ahead and support Johnny like that. I don't have to wait eight, nine, 10 weeks to really get to know him, to know what's already been successful. And then building capacity and competence. This is hard work. It's not easy. It requires a lot of time and understanding of strategic interventions. So we needed something that was going to support that learning and support staff, they have a lot on their plate, to be able to kill like three birds with one stone. So our process last year So our process, last year, I started an MTSS Advisory Council that had teachers, psychologists, social workers, reading specialists, administrators, every, every branch, you, uh, special education, EL, bilingual, as many different representations as I could find. And throughout the year, we developed an evaluation rubric of, I believe, like 32 points? Because I'm thorough like that? And from the evaluation rubric, it was like one of the non-negotiables, what we absolutely have to have. We then vetted about eight different vendors, and narrowed it down to four, and then narrowed it down to three. We had live webinars and presentations where people voted and filled out the evaluation, and we got it down to two, and then the final selection was branching minds. So we started this summer with some training. We trained principals and leads on just the overall use of the tool, just the general overall base of the overview of it. We then had a, a turnkey presentation where principals or leads led staff in the training. I also do a lot of staff meetings on my own, pretty much done every staff this, this year. There's also trains of teams by appointment. I go in and do grade-level teams, department teams, and some schools just have me have a residency all day where I hit every single team meeting. So we get that kind of small group. And I also do one-on-one trainings whenever needed. And then a special and extended trainings for specialists and coaches, because they really, really own this work. So they help support teachers in making that transition. This, again, is our year of what I like to call safe practice. So teachers are, the process is not new. We've, we know RTI, it's been in IDA since 1994. It's been mentioned at NESA five times. This isn't new, the, the, the actual process isn't new. But the tool is, and utilizing and putting things digitally. Everything used to be paper, like binders, a lot, a lot of binder love in this district. So we're starting to move more to the digital, to where we can share and collaborate all in one place. There's been a lot of collaboration with speech, uh, speech, special ed, OT, and EL to see how their work can then also be integrated into this, again, for a holistic approach, because we're talking about the whole child. We have some students that might be at EL, and they also may have a, may, maybe have a speech services and see a reading specialist. Those are three very different people who may have, never have meeting time together. So how can they collaborate within the tool? And again, we wanted to support the process and not be a barrier to the process. So now we're monitoring progress with fidelity through continuous improvement. The way we're doing that is branching minds provides us a roots report. It's basically like a needs assessment or a self-assessment of those key pillars of MTSS. So we kind of grade ourselves and where we're at in those, and then they provide us action steps. And I support in those action steps on continuing to get better. And, and the next, let's see, I guess, two months? Oh my god. End of May, they will fill it out again, and we should see some growth. I also have monthly reports where I pull data from how many plans are being implemented and goal progress. I just finished my mid-year principal check-in, where I did one-on-ones with all the principals, seeing where are they at in their process and how I can continue support. And we do a lot of action planning. So, so far, in our first year, we have seen an increase in amount of plans at this midpoint. So I took what we had last year, and so February of last year, it's a February of this year. And we have an increase of about 18% in math and 20% in reading. It's about an additional 350 plans in math and 350, uh, 335 in reading at this point. If you look at the, the amount in total, it's actually more than that. So currently, we have about 53% of students with plans in math and 54% in reading who met their, their winter growth. Not happy with that number? But again, this is our, this is our, our first year of, of safe practice. So we're really wanting to, to push and aiming at those, those outcome measures of, okay, we're improving in these small areas, we want to make sure that it's showing up on our outcome measures as well. So some of our next steps. We're gonna extend the district-recommended library, and when I show you part of the tool, that'd make more sense, to include more pre-K supports, Spanish language supports, and behavioral interventions. We're also improving the fidelity of implementation. Increasing the goal, our, our number of students in the tier two, who are falling in tier two and tier three, the percentage of those students having plans. So increasing that percentage to at least 75% by end of year. Continuing to build capacity in principals, teams, and teachers. I am, in a way, a department of one who, who does this work, but there needs to be other people who, who understand and know this work. We have our reading specialists and our coaches who do this almost automatically. It's very much what they do. They, they follow that problem-solving process. So taking what they already do and helping spread and build capacity in teacher teams as well to really follow this data cycle model. Professional learning. Increasing our professional learning in this. A lot of teachers and staff have just asked for that. Can we just have a little bit more? So planning to do some more in-person, online modules and as well as PLCs. Okay. So I'll just do a quick walk-through of branching minds, and then questions. So how does branching minds support the MTSS process? So first, so this is what the tool looks like. This is fake data, this is not real. It says Winterfell Elementary. It's a lot of Game of Thrones references. So first of all, it allows us to figure out who needs help early. So day one, all of the student's data, including, like, I have a seventh-grade student, all of their math data, all of their park data, all their DRA data from back when they were in third grade, is all loaded onto the tool. So you could see every piece of information about a child in one page. It's really nice. So what happens is our, uh, universal screener, screener data will go in, and then we tier it based on our cut scores. For us, it's the 25th percentile for tier two and the 10th percentile for tier three. And that'll quickly give us a chart of where our entire school is and then district. And then down below, you'll see a breakdown of all the different demographics. So we could see it by gender, by race, by ethnicity, by free and reduced lunch status, all in one spot.
Can I ask a quick question? On that snapshot, is behavior in there somewhere? Or, because it's academics and behavioral support?
Yes. So we don't currently screen for behavior. There, we make, we can make intervention plans and, and have behavioral interventions, but we don't screen, there's no universal screener for behavior, so we don't tier behavior.
Right. Okay.
Second is that second part of the process. So the first one, we identify the problem, and second, we can understand why they're struggling. Branching minds provides something called insight surveys. They are questions that are differentiated by a child's grade level, their grade level, their actual grade level, their grade-level performance, their IEP status, their EL status, and their universal screeners. So I can have potentially two second-grade students that have different questions based on who they are as a learner. So it asks different questions about not just academic, but their socio-cognitive, executive functioning, and higher-order thinking. These are written by brain scientists that are way smarter than me. And they help kind of drill down the exact areas. You're seeing now one for reading. You see there's language pieces, there's higher-order thinking pieces. And as, a lot of, teachers can fill in this survey, and you'll see relative challenges and strengths. Then again, it allows the teachers to kind of drill down, it's not just reading, like, okay, see, the kid is struggling in reading, but that can mean a lot of different things. So it helps drill down that information. And then third, it allows us to implement evidence-based strategies. So it actually provides a library of resources with thousands of resources that are research-based, that are either immediately accessible, because they're free and open source, or it's things we already have in the district, things like IXL or Read 180. And the library will filter by the child's learning profile. So their age, how they perform on universal screeners, their insight surveys. So it'll go from 400 math resources to 16. So it really narrows down for the teacher on what to do. And each of these, it kind of looks like Pinterest, but each of these, if you click on, it gives you a summary of what it is, how to use it, why to use it, the research that backs it, and the instant download. It's lovely. And allows you to create intervention plans very quickly, and it's very guided. The little green plus signs up there, you just move through, it's kind of like Amazon, where you create your goal, your progress monitor, and you select your intervention, all within the tool. There's no writing, there's no filling anything out, there's no boxes. Again, it allows you to collaborating, collaboratively monitor progress for academics and behavior. So I can see the interventions that are being provided. So in the reading chart, you see there's like a, it's sort of like a laser pointer on here. There's like black in a straight line, and blue in a straight line. Those are the interventions that are being provided each week. And then on top is the progress monitoring. So I can see a correlation between the different interventions that are being provided and the student's, you know, target line and where they're aimed toward that goal. And then save time with documentation and transparency. Instead of a teacher having to write out every single day what she did, whatever's in the plan each week, in her to-do list, he or she, just hits the check mark. Yep, I'm up to them three times a week, you know, for 20 minutes. Everything else is already done in the plan, so they don't have to write it out each time. It's saving a lot of time. And they just instantly can add the progress monitoring immediately in. And as you see, there's multiple kids in one place. I don't have to go into each individual kid's plan. So it's saving time. And, sorry, I'm like, I can't do that. Meet compliance needs while improving student outcomes. So again, we're able to, we're documenting, we know that this is part of ESSA, it's part of our job. But we're able to see very quickly in meetings, in grade-level meetings, who's making progress and who isn't. Okay. Questions?
I had a question. When, first of all, thank you. I appreciate the amount of stakeholder input and time that you all put into finding an appropriate tool. And I think it shows in how user-friendly the tool is. I had a question around specialties that are collaborating in light of the conversation we had tonight. Is there any way to add out-of-school-time professionals that are interacting with children and families? And any feedback that they might have regarding interventions that are working or not working?
So currently, our out-of-school-time, what we're using for now, we're, we're trying out this year, is with Learning Plus. So all of our Learning Plus is on here, listed as intervention. They are writing goals, and they are taking attendance via this. So again, that's how we're supporting after school. Outside, not yet. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like, but I think this is something, you know, when OST, we're able to have those conversations, I, I definitely think this is something that's of value.
So I wonder, like, with Evanstem or with any of our summer learning providers, if those folks would be able to learn from, but also provide information to?
So it would require, would require data agreements? So I thought of a couple of things when you were saying that. One would be a question of, like, would we ever want to be able to issue an insight survey to an out-of-school provider? Because that could lend to some, to insight on how to develop a plan. And I don't know whether that's something that's possible in branching minds right now. The second piece of that is with the why, we do have a data-sharing agreement that families do sign off on prior to being a power scallor. And so that does allow us to share a data with them, to allow them to get their classes organized quickly and to take advantage of the six weeks. And so we need to, I think we'd have to tease out the value and the right partners, and then figure out the right agreements for that kind of thing.
And then another thing that we've discussed before, but that came to mind again when we were talking about behaviors. I wonder how the Equity Impact Assessment Tool has been applied to thinking about how student behaviors that are considered problematic are identified and how, what interventions are in place or recommended?
I think that's exactly why we do not tier for behavior. There, there are SEL screeners out there that, that do, do a good job of identifying skills and competencies that, that students are strengthened, and, and they may have a position. All the research will say, don't use that to, to tier students for intervention. Like, oh, this kid needs a self-regulation intervention. Use it as a flashlight, not as, not as a, not as a tiering in that way. Currently, right now, we, we don't tier for behavior. It's just as teachers are noticing behavior that's coming up, they're able to provide behavioral interventions. Now, a lot of behavioral interventions are a lot, they're not as intense as you would think. Because a lot, academics and behavior, they, they come together. So whenever we talk about academics, usually there's a behavioral piece there. It could be attendance. So there are like attendance things. What can you do for attendance to make sure the students are coming on time? Some of them are executive functioning. Oh, like, having a, like a Graco Grozer-type planner. That's an accommodation that you could provide for a student, that's really helping them get that executive functioning pieces. So there's a lot of those like that, that's like things that we can do in the classroom. And then we also, of course, have our, our tiered here, like our state groups, and things like that with the social workers, and those are when they get a little more intensive.
And I had one more question that I had emailed earlier, but that I have some additional insight on. I'm curious about the amount of incomplete goals. And I hear that this is a safe practice year. I'm curious if, as folks are evaluating, and which students don't have goals, if we're looking at the race and ethnicity of those student populations without, or those, that student group without goals, or the outcomes, and if there are any priorities around race, ethnicity, and student outcomes, and having goals set up.
So the, the data that you're referring to, the, in the, the report. So students can have goals, and they can have multiple interventions, accommodations, extensions. So that's where you'll see there's more plans, but there's not a, there's not as many goals. So that's why you might see more than that. So like, our Learning Plus is in there, and they don't, they won't have goals, like, particular, individual goals for those students. Or a student might have, you know, one goal, but having three interventions to aim at that goal. Like, they might be seeing a reading specialist, and they have something going on in the classroom, and they also see a fluency tutor. But it's only one goal, but it's counted as three things. And then there's also like extended, so extended supports, things like ST math, where they're using it all the time, but we're just documenting that they're receiving that support. It's not necessarily like an intervention for that student. When we are prioritizing who needs interventions, it is the students who are falling below the 25th percentile. It does break out for us the, the demographics in there. And when you're looking at the, the racial tiering, we see that our, our Hispanic students and our Black students have more, there are more, there's a higher percentage of those students needing tier-two and tier-three support. So when we're providing support for those that are below the 25th, a larger amount of those students.
The priority is to make sure that there are goals set and interventions planned for students who are falling below the 25th percentile in the diagnostic tools?
And the universal screener.
And on the universal screener?
Math, DRA, things like that, we get three times a year.
And so the goals that, where there's no goals set, those are folks that are in tier one?
So tier, tier one doesn't, I mean, some students have it, because their teachers are using this for like flex grouping. They're not required.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any plan, and thank you for, you know, complying with this and doing this incredible work and being this department of one. And, and, you know, that, that, to me, speaks of capacity, so, you know, thank, thank you for taking this on and...
I'm a team, I'm a team. One in MTSS, but we're, we're all a team.
But there's a team, and, and that's a good thing. And then, you should, you should be supported, so that's great. You know, I, I, as a parent, I, you know, I, I value whatever information I can get for my kiddos in regards to how I can help at home, and, and how I can make that parent-teacher connection. And, and, you know, I, I, when I go to... And, you know, when I go to parent-teacher conferences, I say, how can I support you, your work, at home with my guys? And so then what I usually get is I get a MAP report, I get, you know, some samples from work. Is there any plans to actually have a parent-facing report? Because I think this, again, the way it's formatted, it's very user-friendly. Something that I think a parent can really benefit in regards to really learning about what their child's needs are, and trying to help out.
I missed that part. It's already there, so it's collaboration for every stakeholder. So for each child, there is, there's an intervention report, which you can kind of see at the top right. So you can click that, and it PDFs everything that this kid is getting. My favorite feature is there's a parent log. So every time I email or call, I just click the plus, and it's nice, I can log it in there. And then there's also parent letters that generate, we have five different letters. And what it does is it mail merges, it takes all the student's information, puts it in a Word document, explains MTSSS, I wrote it, so it's really nice and flowery. And a very short little paragraph of what it is. And like, hey, based on this screener, this is where your kid is. Here's the goal of what we're doing, here's the intervention, and here's how they're progressing. Signed, the team. So all a teacher has to do is click that, it logs it, and makes a Word document. She prints it off, and she can hand it to parents in very easy language. And it's very pictorial and visual.
Yeah.
And they're also translated already in Spanish.
Fabulous.
So English and Spanish. I want to get more languages in there, but that's where I'm at right now.
And, you know, and I was just telling my colleague here, I, you know, I wish I would have had this when I was teaching. I mean, I really, I really think it's such an incredible tool. You're making me, I mean, I still have my license, I can go back if I want.
Welcome.
This is a good tool.
It was developed by a teacher on maternity leave.
Yeah.
Because, you know, making a baby and...
It makes sense to have educators kind of weighing on some of these things. Another question I have is, okay, so I saw that there's different ways that you're disseminating this information and training and building capacity. And my specific question around building capacity is how does the MTSSS figure in the school work plan? So...
Everywhere. Pretty much every school work plan mentions MTSSS, if not, me by name.
Okay.
So every, every school, and I'm so proud of our principals this year. I was here last year, kind of building this process up, and this year is really bringing in the tool. And the amount of growth that I'm seeing in teams that are working together, and the schools that just have this process going, we're seeing kids move. I don't know if Elizabeth will hit on some of the schools that have done, that have really owned this MTSSS work through their reading specialists, and just moved kids.
I also was in schools the last two weeks, visiting with principals on their school work plans. And I think every one of them has an MTSSS goal that they could articulate without looking at the plan.
I also think that you see in a lot of the work plans, those will be summarized in a near board meeting, but you'll see in a lot of the work plans, a focus on differentiation in small groups, and that feeds directly into the work as well.
And then I'll do one more question. So then, I know every child needs, you know, again, we need to differentiate, and every child has specific needs. But is there any patterns in regards to certain interventions that are helpful to, you know, you know, an English learner in a TWEED program, or, you know, a Black student? So, I mean, are there interventions that really bubble up that seem to be, could be universal?
Great question. So the, my favorite thing about Branching Minds is they're 100% customizable for free. They're a newer, I think they've been around five years. And anytime we have something that we need, like, that was one of my questions. I want to know what interventions are being utilized, and which ones are making progress and moving kids. Because I want to make sure I'm highlighting those. And so I brought that to them, and in two weeks, they're going to launch that for us. So pull down reports where I can just pull. Right now, they've already given me data sharing, so they allow me to directly translate with their, their system. So I'm able to pull those on my end. I'm okay with data, but they're way better. So they're making that a nice customizable report for everyone. So it's, I'm excited to know. I mean, I have a pivot table now, which, it'd be really nice to see, especially toward the end of the year, when we look at those outcome data, to see what's moving kids. So we can highlight those in our district recommended.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the charts and information correctly. So total, right now, after the two years of implementing, we have 43% of students in Tier Two and Three in reading that have plans, and 38%. And the goal is, obviously, that that will read 100%, but we're just, because we're just rolling this out. And this is, has this been like rolled out at any particular schools? Or it's just like, this was given to everybody, and so this is okay? And when we say 43 and 38, does that mean with goals, and like, complete plans? So these are not incomplete plans, okay?
And this is at that current, the February current time. If I were to pull right now, it would be more.
Okay.
So I wanted to compare where we were this time last year to where we are this year.
And then looking at Figure 9.1, the students with plans, growth from fall to winter, based on MAP. So that's looking at the 43 and 38% of Tier Two, Tier Three students who have complete plans. These are the numbers who met and didn't meet.
Yeah, that met their math proficiency.
Right. And so this is where, for those who did meet growth, we can figure out, looking, what interventions were used in them. Okay, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
And then same thing with Figure 9.2, the students with plans, growth from fall to winter, based on DRA, same.
Yeah, and I looked at that again today, and just, I wanted to see, so I just looked at first grade, because that's all I had at the time, we had extended. I wanted to see how many kids that were, you know, needing Tier Two and Tier Three support in the fall, met the winter benchmark, which, if I'm not mistaken, it's a 10, Level 10, yes? So first graders that would need a Level 10. So 47 out of 86 of them are now a Level 10. That means that they have now moved, yeah, they have now moved into the Tier One.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's, that's almost half of those students who are, you know, yeah, were not, not even there at all, come Tier Three, Tier Two, and now do not need that additional support. So we're really seeing in the lower grades, and that's a huge kudos to our reading specialists and coaches that have really been kind of pushing this work along forward.
And I think really the classroom teachers too. Because one of the pieces that Elizabeth has really been working is tightening the collaboration between all three groups. So the intervention work is happening inside the classroom, and is bridged to any intervention support that might be outside of the classroom.
Those layered supports.
And then that, actually, is my next question. Or, what is, I know that there was a lot of teacher input in choosing this tool. So now that it's been in use, what kind of feedback are you getting from teachers?
Actually, mostly positive. At first, there's, there's a lot of, it's new, it's something different. But as people do it, and basically, once they do one or two, it becomes just very, it's just so user-friendly, it just comes really inherent. Some people need a little more support than others, but...
But generally, it's positive feedback?
Compared to last year, when I used to walk in buildings, I'm like, oh, God, Donna's here. This year is like, oh, God, Donna's here! Like, okay, that's better. So that's qualitative data for you. People are loving it.
I mean, the recording looks, it does look, really, yeah.
Everyone loves the library. Because it's like, well, you're telling me what to do, fantastic.
And so when they're, when teachers are able to choose the intervention, does it automate? I guess this is where I'm a little bit confused about, like, the plans that don't have goals. Like, when they choose an intervention, it doesn't automatically have, like, the goals associated or outcome metrics associated with it?
So, they allow the plan to be made in three parts. So the goal, the progress monitor, the intervention. Because you can have a goal and multiple interventions in there. So you make the goal first, and put the intervention based off of what goal you have.
Okay.
What's the skills I'm focusing on? How am I going to know what's a success? How am I going to progress monitor that? And then what intervention is actually going to aim toward that goal? So some teachers select interventions from, from here, and just throw them with kids because they're extended, something like ST Math, where they do often, or Khan Academy, where they do in small groups, or they might send that home. So they may not make a goal or progress monitor. They just want to make sure the kid is doing additional practice. But that is something I'm aiming toward next year, is being very, very clear. And a complete plan includes all three of those pieces.
And I think some of those kids are also kids that are scheduled into our Learning Plus.
Yeah, Learning Plus.
Also into some of the interventions during the day that are scheduled as classes. And so there were ways of us to kind of, to log that there was an intervention in place that's actually intended to happen over a sustained period of time, and that they were identified for around a specific criteria.
And then just a couple more questions that I have. One, are all educators able to access this for, so including, like, TAs and other support?
We do have some TAs, based on those who are running Learning Plus, or if they asked, because they are, they want to learn it, they're co-teaching with the teacher. So I have had, I do have some TAs that we put on there. But we didn't do it as a blanket, every TA.
Is there an intention for that, once it's more up and running?
I would like to, because I think they're such an underutilized resource of like, helping to provide that additional.
Right.
I also think we look to figure out the access for those members as well, because they don't always have access to technology. So we would need to make sure that we're grappling with, we were making sure and providing both.
Okay. And then my last question, for now at least, is, you know, so once we have all of this data put in, and it's going to be longitudinal, and I think it'll be this great tool for educators, is there any intention for that to transition when kids go from eighth to ninth grade?
I'm so glad you asked that. So you know what I can do? Last year, God bless the reading specialists who individually went in and made a PDF of every single kid, which, there were a thousand plans, by the way, every single kid who had an intervention plan, so that we could keep that data when we transfer to a tool. Now I just go filter, eighth grade has a plan, generate intervention report, and it batches it into one report, and just gets into that school.
And so that gets shared?
Yes, but it takes about 30 seconds. Super nice. I love that, I'm a big fan.
No, that's, that's great to hear.
I mean, and all this is like, it's customizable. We asked for that, said, is there a way that we can generate batch reports? And they said, yes, give us a month, and they, it happened.
Fantastic, thank you.
I had a couple of additional questions. For the parent feedback element, have we had any opportunity to hear from parents how that information is received? If it feels accessible, if it feels useful, or to hear from educators? If sharing that information has proved useful or impactful for children?
I've spoken with a few parents, just who are from a small parent group, and just kind of talking them through the process. I shared with them our D65 MTSSS handbook. They asked for it, and I was like, sure, we can share it, this is what our beliefs are here. And so I got a little bit of feedback for that. I'm not at that level yet, but if you have any suggestions on how I can make that happen, please let me know. But I want to continue to, you know, build the capacity in staff. So then next year, it's, it's part of our expectation that you're sharing these reports with parents at conferences. As soon as you make a plan, you generate that report, and you send it home. They need to know what's going on, because again, so they can support that work at home as well.
And are our early childhood professionals here at JEH, use...
Yes, yes, they do.
Yes.
Yes. Their problem-solving meetings, their problem-solving processes, they're really wonderful. And they partner with parents wonderfully. But yeah, they're working, working on the tool, and they're helping also build out that library for pre-K.
Okay, wonderful.
So we're the first district that's using this tool that's done it for pre-K. So we're a pioneer at this point.
So I am thinking that there are lots of different parent groups within the district, and I'm wondering if that's an opportunity to hear how folks are interacting with MTSSS, and if it feels useful. I'm also wondering if there's an opportunity there to teach people about MTSSS, and how it can be useful to them in terms of understanding where their children are, and how they can support them, and if their children are getting what they feel like their children need.
And advocating for their kids, yeah.
Imagine most of that comes from teachers to parents, right? When there's a concern, teachers talk to parents.
Yeah, typically.
Yeah, but, and there may be some parents who feel like they haven't seen it before, they wish they had seen it, or they have seen it, but they didn't know what to do with it. I'm wondering how we engage in those conversations to help our broader community of parents understand that there is a resource, and they can ask about it, and that it can be useful to them, and to think about how to make it useful. And I think that's also some ways that parents help one another.
Yeah.
Right? So if someone is like, I'm wondering about how my kid is doing, then a parent who is familiar may say, you know what, have you asked about this? And, I mean, that's another resource to kind of embed within, I think, our community. The other question I have, I don't know, I know you mentioned that the reports translate into Spanish, but I'm wondering if specifically TWEED teachers were involved in selecting the tool, and how responsive it's been to the distinct needs of bilingual immersion?
Yes, so we had several TWEED teachers on the council, and that one of the probably our number-one criteria is it needs to be available in English and Spanish. There needs to be either the, at least the parent contact piece, like, that has to be available. So that was something that had to be there. And also being able to build in Spanish-language supports and EL supports. So that's already built into the library. And we're continuing to add more. The greatest thing about the library is we can add stuff as well. And what they'll do is every month, they go and they find the things that we've added, and if it has significant research to back it, they will put the research in there, and they'll make it Branching Minds-approved. So we're adding, continues constantly adding, like, Spanish-language supports, EL supports, things like that.
Great. So the last question I have for now also is, how has learnings from our Black Student Success Team been incorporated in the library or in the suggested intervention or instructional tools that are available?
Do you mean directly, like, from Dr. Green and Jari?
Dr. Green.
I mean... So they are huge proponents in this work, and just advocates for this work. What MTSSS is, it is equity, because you are constantly providing the support for the kids when they need it, where they need it, and how they need it. As for distinctly coming up with, like, interventions in that way, not, not directly. But one thing, I forgot to mention this earlier, that Branching Minds just announced last week, is they are actually looking at normative, they're national, they're big enough now, that they can actually look at interventions that are working for students that are EL, or that are Black and Low Social, or Suburban and Urban. They're able to do all those comparisons, so they can actually highlight the interventions that are working for that particular demographic, and not just one thing, like, being Black, or being a native Spanish speaker, it's as many different forms that they can get. That'll be a little bit later, but that's something that's going to, again, continue to make us, make the right decisions for students, based on their particular learning profile.
If I could just add, that in January, Donna and Jari and Latasha worked together to do a workshop for principals focused on really the baseline, and thinking about winter formative assessment data for students. And one of the things that, so Latasha and Jari together presented a workshop on really getting deep into the math, into the MAP data, and how do you analyze it, and think about it? And then Donna did a complimentary workshop for principals, and thinking about how do you lift a cycle of data analysis, and thinking about what does the data tell you? And then thinking about your response to the MAP assessment tool. So I think it's, it was an important collaboration that has led to then, we followed up with a mid-year data review session with our principals to look at their mid-year winter data, to think about their school work plans in relation to the mid-year winter data, to be able to do course correction. So this was in early February, that was our conversation that we did, and that has now led to changes to what the... And that has now led to changes to what they're going to be doing in their class for the spring.
The work is very collaborative with me and Jari and Latasha. It's, I mean, we talk about data cycles in the same, the same way. Every, it's the problem-solving process no matter what. So their work is supporting my work, which is supporting their work.
Thank you.
You know, as has been highlighted, there's so many reasons why this is really exciting work. That earlier question about community schools and how does it align to our strategic vision? When I think about that question and I think about the fact that this is about our children. And these are real, they're, they're files, but they're, it's about our kids and how they're performing and how they're performing now. And what do we do about that? So that's really essential. The second thing is it's taking all of the data that we gather. And we have lots of, sometimes too many assessments. But it's making that assessment data really usable about the young person. And we can actually share that with parents, we can share that with administrators, we can share that with teachers, interventionists, to be able to do some work. And the third thing that's really exciting is Donna's commitment to this. And you, you were, when I was out with principals over the last couple of weeks, to a person. Hey, I just saw Donna, I just saw Miss Cross, she just came over and helped us, she came to a staff meeting. And part of where we were when we, when I landed was we had a wobbly tool. We had a very committed colleague, but we had a wobbly tool. So we've gotten a very strong tool and a very strong implementer who's working as a member of the team. And I think it's, it's really key to, to celebrate that and then to think about what comes next as we keep going forward.
Thank you very much. This is, I think, very exciting work. I think the capacity that hopefully we'll have to really then, you know, take what we learned from this. About which interventions are working, which interventions are actually working to help pull students out of the twenty-fifth percentile. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of promise with this tool. So thank you for, for your work and for this presentation. And then with that, we will move on to the literacy update.
Do you want me to go there or do?
No.
Just gonna do it here. I just, I just need the pointer.
Yeah.
Deela's on the run. Thanks, Deela.
All set?
Yeah.
Good evening. Okay, so my goal here for today is to provide an update on the district's K-three literacy work. In the student outcomes and also to describe steps that we've taken to continue addressing the achievement gaps of our Black and Hispanic students, our English learners, and students who enter school not literacy kindergarten ready. The first thing that I'd like to do is to offer an opportunity to, you stop to give an overview of the work that we do in literacy. First and foremost, highlighting our goal that we have. That we must provide a forward, high-quality, effective literacy instruction for all of our students. But also be ready to accelerate student learning of our striving students. Which are Black, Latino, English learners, and the students that I previously identified. There are key levers that help us move our work forward. One, that we establish a culture of continuous improvement. Literacy is an ongoing process. It is, it is ever-changing. Because we're dealing with students that learn in different ways. They approach, or they're come more ready than others in terms of language development, in terms of literacy, understanding of concepts of print. All the foundational skills that our students, many of our students have when they bring to, when they come to school. So that's part of the work that we do that make sure that we have those opportunities for them. The other key lever that we have, continues learning. And the, the second lever that we have is, which is on the, the green square, is basically the work that Donna just described. All about MTSS, making sure that our tier-one instruction is of high quality. That we are also prepared and ready and support teachers in providing those tier-two supports in the classroom. In order for them to develop the intervention supports that students need. And the tier-three levels of support provided by our intervention, our reading interventionists as well. So in, in all in all, the, we want to make sure that the instruction, the supports, the guides that we provide in literacy. Address the needs of our students in core instruction and in intervention as well. Guided by this, the lever of work, the, the key levers that we also focus our work on. Is that we have high expectations for student learning and those are guided, informed by the standards. The expectations for quality teaching comes from the frameworks that we've created. And we're in the third year of implementing our K-three framework. That guide the, the type of instruction and the components in literacy that need to be taught and addressed in, in our teaching and learning about literacy. And of course, the expectations for quality learning environment. We've engaged in this work more, this year more than ever, focusing on providing culturally responsive teaching. Culturally responsive practices in the work that we do. Paying attention, having that growth mindset, paying attention to the needs of our students, paying attention to that we need to know who our students are. Their strengths and abilities. But more than anything for us educators, our teachers and interventionists, coaches. Then we must be reflective of our own work in order to better service the needs of our students to the supports that we provide to our teachers. To the left, if you hear from here, the structures of the work that we do are, we provide the coaching supports. Reading supports through the work that our reading specialists do in every building. Professional learning at the district level through the school hub days. Through having release days, asking, providing those opportunities for teachers to come and meet with us when possible. Based on if we are able to provide subsupports, then we meet with them. And principal collaboratives, professional learning communities that now our coaches have been able to establish. Based on the work that they've done with teachers. We participate in grade level and staff meetings, develop summer curriculum projects, summer professional learning as well. And work with internal and external partners as well. And of course, we mentioned also in this document, the measurements, annual measurements that we use. Assessments of learning, the ISO, the, basically what Donna described, using DRA, EDL, and WA. In grades four and five, we use Teachers College, which is an assessment that gives us the reading, where our students are in terms of providing reading levels so we can provide, target our instruction based on where students are. And we are currently using also piloting an assessment called STEP. There, I'll talk a little bit more later on. Our next slide focuses on, at the heart of the work that we do. Is that we provide a balanced literacy approach to instruction. And this is, focuses on all the components of literacy in core instruction and in intervention. Meaning that we make sure that our students have access to high-quality teaching of inward study. Influency and comprehension, vocabulary, speaking and listening and writing. And of course, informed by the standards. The approaches to instruction that we use, the model of instruction that we use is through workshop models. So we divide our balanced literacy into three major components. In language workshop, reading workshop, and writing workshop. We follow a scope and sequence in our curriculum materials and resources. Are basically units of study, mostly in K-three right now in reading. We're using the Teachers College Lucy Hawkins units of study. We use mentor text, level text strategies that helps teachers and teach the, the skills or elevate the skills that our students need to know, enable, in order for them to be successful readers. Implementation impact that we look for are those shifts in practice. The shifts that we have to see evident, evidence of. That our work, the professional learning and all the supports that we provide, we see those shifts in practice that are allowing for deeper student learning and advancing students, accelerating the student learning of students who need additional supports. A professional, this is also a high-level overview of our professional learning structures. First, we gather, we, we go through a four-step process. We develop awareness of what is, needs to be learned and why. We make sure that our students, our teachers have the strategies and the skills needed to learn and how, how they're going to be implementing the work. And then we provide opportunities for application and transfer back in the classroom. We support them through the coaching supports that our coaches support, provide. And the ultimate goal of that is that the learning becomes second nature, that it is institutionalized. And so that evident on how the students are progressing in their learning. So all the work that we do, of course, we, we want to see that in student advances in, in literacy. And while we hear, I'm sorry. Based on the outcomes that we see in this, on the summary of the winter data trends, literacy trends. We see that our performance in, in DRA, EDL, included EDL because it also includes the, the Spanish component of it. Shows inconsistent pattern across grade levels. But you'll, and we also see that our, the results were at or above five-year baseline in kindergarten and also in third grade, and below the baseline in first and second grade. And you have all this data in the K-three literacy memo that we'll share with you in more detail. I'm just giving you the high, you know, a high overview of the, of the key points of the data. We also saw that eighty-five percent, above eighty-five percent of our students in kindergarten reached the benchmark. Almost an eleven percent greater than the five-year baseline for kindergarten. And that our Black students in kindergarten also achieved almost seventy-seven percent in the benchmark as well. Twelve-point-five greater than the baseline, the five-year baseline. Of our Latin, Latino students or Hispanic students, sixty-nine-point-eight percent of them met benchmark. An eleven-point-one increase from the baseline. And this is, and the data, the table that you see there provides this information also. And the next, this one is the one that provides the students the results at or above the benchmark in kindergarten and third grade.
Can I ask a question about the data? In the winter school year eighteen column, is that for the same students? So is that the kindergarten number for those first graders?
So it is not. When you get to the cohort graphs at the bottom, those are, those are same-student cohort models. With these particular charts, this is.
Cohort comparison from year to year.
Yeah, so the trend lines are the cohort comparisons. The data tables here are just a snapshot of second grade results from last year to this year, different students. But the trend lines at the end are exact student to student cohort.
These are, these are different groups of kids.
Thank you.
So the data, we continue to show that we need to target the goal, which we have, of accelerating learning for our striving students. As we have not yet achieved this as a system. We have, we see the data, the positive outcomes that we see are, those are positive trends. But still, the work needs to be done. In our next slide, we have, which Donna was alluding to, that we have six of ten schools. That show an increase in Black students meeting DRA benchmark. And then six of those that show an increase of students who arrived in the district not kindergarten-ready, meeting DRA benchmark. And then two of the five, three schools show an increase in Hispanic students meeting DRA benchmark. There is some progress, but we know that more needs to be done. So our continued goal is to strengthen intentional and aligned efforts on accelerating the learning for our Black, Hispanic, and not K-ready students. This is our theory of action. We invest greater professional learning resources in our schools where there are the greatest number of striving students. This support will deepen, or deepens, understanding and application of culturally relevant practices. When teachers are more intentional in their use of standards and becoming increasingly responsive. Our students will accelerate their learning and achieve their higher levels. The students that we, that I just mentioned before. So some immediate steps that we're taking. Based on the feedback that we've received from, from our teachers that we work very collaboratively. Based on looking at the data in branching minds. And based on feedback from our reading interventionists, listening from the community as well, where the gaps in learning exist. Especially with our striving students, with our Black population, with our English learners, with our TWE students. That additional attention needed to be placed in how we teach or what we teach in terms of language instruction. And so we are working, we have a group of, of schools that are willing, or teachers are very eager to start implementing new phonics curriculum. And we are, this opportunity is afforded to both TWE schools and also monolingual classrooms or classrooms where only English is, monolingual classrooms. And they're both, the curriculum is, is authentic in Spanish and of course, in, in English as well. And so then we are also continue to establish more intentional partnerships with our pre-K team down here at JEH. With our special ed supervisors and teachers and our bilingual teams and in schools, of course, with higher needs. We're also identifying authentic Spanish curriculum options for TWE classrooms. And we're in the process of doing that. In addition to that, an immediate, an immediate step and something that I mentioned that we are doing. We are piloting an assessment that it is both available in English and Spanish. It is more rigorous, it's aligned to the standards. And with the potential of helping us address the learning gaps of our students, especially the student population that I mentioned previously. And early on. So I'd like to end with this quote. "The real voyage of discovery consists not in seeking new landscapes, but in having new eyes." And by that, I mean that we do great work across the district. Every teacher, every educator, every administrator puts their heart and soul into the work that we do. All of us do. And we do, you know, the, just going, looking deeper and with a different lens. Paying more attention, closer attention to where, to what we're seeing. And then work with that so that we can give our students the opportunity that they need. And that we are the people that they need to have in front of them servicing to the highest, in, in the best way possible.
One thing I just want to add before we open up to questions is that we have a couple of very strong community partners in this work. Foundation sixty-five is very, very supportive of this work. And they help, that part of the investment of Foundation sixty-five provides additional coaching and focus for our K-one work. And so we're very appreciative to Foundation sixty-five as a partner. And additionally, the YMCA and our partnership around Power Scholars over the summer. Provides summer learning focused on reading and math for two hundred kids. And we specifically identify students that are fiftieth percentile and below. So we do this work with good partners in the community.
Thank you. Open up any questions?
I love the, you emphasized it in this presentation, but it's also been consistent in all of the professional development agendas that we get to see when you share it out. The, the investment's not in programs, it's in people.
Yes.
And that's, that's where the sustainability of the work comes from. So that's really wonderful. And there seems to be good trends from K to one. And there seems to be good trends from K to one, and charging the team with the question of sustainability is awesome if we're training them to be the, to carry that baton, so.
Yes.
It's great.
And so the goal is to have the vertical, as we move forward, to have that vertical alignment now that K-one, because K-one are working closely, now is to bring the second grades and the third grade as well. So the students, when they move up the grade, the supports will be there, the level of, the quality of instruction, the level of support will be ready for them as well.
This cohort of kindergartners is statistically different than the other ones too, so maybe they can be a, a new trend line as well.
New trend.
And we've also had the opportunity to work with pre-K a little bit, and Sharon specifically brought the literacy team down at the beginning of the year, and they've continued to really dig into their teaching strategy school data, and so we're looking for alignment opportunities in those spaces, and they're very open and willing partners.
Correct. And there also, today we had a meeting with the pre-K team down here, looking at Spanish material, materials to see how authentic they are, how culturally responsive they are. And so the group of K, pre-K educators and Sharon, the bilingual team and I were there. And so it's really power, I mean, this is work that is based in response to the community of, you know, requesting that that happens. We know it's best practice, that that is in place, and we're just making, making sure that we have the time and the opportunity to do that.
I need your questions?
Yeah, so I had asked about the cohort analysis. I hadn't seen these charts, so thank you for calling them out and for providing them. Do we, it seems as if, I want to know if, I guess if I'm understanding this correctly, that we had a dip in kindergarten readiness as measured by Icel this fall. And now we see that there's a spike in liter, in proficiency in terms of literacy for that same group of kindergartners. That's pretty incredible. I mean, that's really affirming information to hear in comparison to that surprising data, and I would love to hear more about...
Well, we're super excited that it is there, and we hope that it stays in the next assessment round. I mean, there is so much work that has gone into this, into this, at these, at this level, right? A K-three push, implementing the K-three framework, this, we're into the third year. And I was just asking the coaches today, they've been in K-one for a year and a half, but really it's a, it's a labor of, the, the attention, the engagement of the teachers as well, the quality of the interaction that they have, and they have their learning labs. They're learning from one another. They are powerful classrooms, they are. We need to learn from them, and they know that. So they're bringing, they're providing those opportunities for teachers to do their crossover and to visit each other. Definitely the coaching, the coaching supports, and Stacy talked about the support that the foundation provides, because we also have a kindergarten partnership with parents. It's Kindergarten Literacy Project, the KLP, which we have a breakfast, breakfast with them tomorrow. You're welcome to come and join us. The work that they're doing, it's also, I'm, I'm reading their feedback, the engagement and the support they provide to the little ones is amazing. So that could be also, I mean, everything contributes to the growth of these learners. And so we're excited about that. I know that the work that the reading interventionists also are doing in, in the school is being more intentional as well. They are looking for different ways. They're trying to see them in the past, they will see them later in the year after they, they gather enough data and after they got their groups going in other grades, but now they're trying in, in helping them more consistently and more, and earlier, early on in the year. So that is, could also be, you know, you know, something that has impacted the learning of these students. But more than anything, I think also, it's the, the instruction that is happening in core instruction. I was, I, because I hear them and I see them, and, and I saw three wonderful units of study that they, the students go through. The superpowers of being a reader, the becoming a reader, and the word detectives is like, I want my children, my grandchildren, my children over here, but my grandchildren to experience that, and it is just so amazing. And I, I think all of that is taking root in, and we're going to continue work really hard to make sure that it moves on to first grade and second grade and so, and move up.
This is also the second year that that K-one group has been teaching those reading workshop units. And the Colquins curriculum is rich, it's, it's standards aligned, but it is not the easiest curriculum to pick up. And so there is, for our teachers that are now in their second pass or in our third, second and third grade, in their third pass, it really, like, I saw a second grade teacher the other day who's really having some outstanding results with her Yale teachers, and she was like, "I love this, it works, and I now get how it all comes together."
Yep, yeah. And then there's a, a first grade classroom, even the school is not one of the schools, but at the first grade classroom that it has, I think, more than fifty percent of English learners, every student is at level. And so they start with no English when they, when they begin, or hardly any English, right? So those are lessons, those are, you know, places where we need to learn from one another, so it's encouraging.
I just want to note that it's, the excitement you have when talking about this is palpable, and Donna had it too. Like, you can tell that the work feels good and feels successful because you light up when talking about it. And that's, that's what we want, right? Is work that feels like it's reciprocal and go in the right direction.
Thank you, thank you. And we're bringing that language and literacy work, because we're paying close attention to how language develops, right? And, and it's work that, it is integrated, it's not one or the other, they're together.
It also makes you calm, cool, and collected when going into somebody's classroom, and it's easier to accept, right?
Correct, yes.
And I can attest that Elizabeth is here long, long hours and always enthusiastic in her office, as I'm watching.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll speak as a parent of a kindergartner. I'm pleased that my daughter is reading to me and her brother and sister confidently, and she definitely has picked up her superpowers.
Right.
Yeah, in English and Spanish.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And I definitely can see the impact of thoughtful instruction and instructional I'm curious how we learn from the success that we kind of see on these two cohort, cohort charts, which is that there's a bit of a bump in first grade, or between kindergarten and first grade. And so are the second and third grade teachers having the opportunity maybe to loop and talk to and learn from? Or are we transitioning some of those coaching supports? Like, what do we kind of attest that bump to? And how are we replicating what was successful for kindergarten?
For kindergartners.
For second and third?
Yeah, great question. Part of the, one of the goals that we have going forward is there to establish those partnerships with, with principals, so that they can also help together, we can see where the needs, the, the needs are, so that we can deploy our resources, our coaching supports and reading interventionist supports where they need to be. So we're going to look into that and see, you know, how, how much more we can do in the schools where, where the need is, right? And so that's already work in progress that we are contemplating. Also, the K-one coaches are paying attention to the, to the teachers that are ready and willing to come and learn. And your, I guess your question is also how we're going to loop in second and third, in third grade? Were we, right?
Yeah, so that we don't see the dip that we're seeing with the same cohort of children. I'm, right, it's the same children, but there's a dip in their proficiency level come...
Second grade.
Second and third grade, in the two different cohort analysis of black students and not K-ready.
Part of, part of the, and as we are analyzing the data, I mean, there are different things that could have happened. We are, this is the first year that we are implementing language workshop in second grade, and so they have not had the opportunity to address the specific word study skills that our students had from, with the new curriculum that we have. We're also confident that our new phonics curriculum is coming to second grade as well. It's not out yet, and so we're going to make sure that they are, those supports are in place when they, when they become available. And again, we have authentic phonics, fonética gramática en español, and phonics curriculum in, in English. So those things are in place already. And like I mentioned, with the work that we are doing with the foundation as well, hoping that that K-one-two alignment will happen, that, that is in the works, and I think that's in, in one of our proposals as well.
I think another thing we need to look at too is there's a shift in the demand of the assessment.
Correct.
Right at the end of second grade, because the, to achieve a level twenty-eight, which is the end of second grade, students now, at that point on a DRA are writing a response, they're writing their response on the retail as opposed to verbally giving that. And so we did specifically write in more opportunities for that in the second grade curriculum last year, and kind of a mini unit that prepares kids to do that. Some of what teachers, we've been working with teachers, is also helping them realize, when do I need to do that as a small group? When should I do it as whole class? Because you've got kids that reach that benchmark at very different times. So I think there still is some, because kids could, we might have a child who achieves twenty-eight at the beginning of second grade, we might have a child that's still working to achieve that twenty-eight at the end of second grade. So I think we do need to continue to do, we need to do a little more digging into that data to see, is, is the growth slowing down? Are we seeing a number of kids still getting, are they getting to the point of attempting the twenty-eight but not achieving the twenty-eight? Because that will let us know whether that is also a barrier, or if the barrier is slowing down a little bit earlier in second grade. Because as we move from first to second, we move much more out of the mechanics of reading and more into some of the comprehension of reading while still working on the mechanics. So we can look at both of those things. And we also know our writing curriculum is in a place where it is engaging for kids, it moves kids along, but it is not yet in a place where we want it as common core, common core aligned. So that's, that's a space where we know we need to move into at times.
And I'm glad you pointed that out. I mean, I think, specifically for English learners, that is the tough nut to crack when, in regards to language acquisition. So I really appreciate that we're doing phonics in Spanish as well as, you know, as well as English, because again, we know that, again, you, you, you know, children first have to learn the sound, the, the sounds of the letters, right? And first on a draw, you know, well, I mean, that, that is at, at the very core of how you learn language, right? You got to first learn the sounds and then putting the sounds together, and then you make words and sentences and all that good stuff. So I really, really appreciate that. And I think that's been a push from the community that they really want, teachers and parents, that they really want to get to the very core foundations of language and literacy development. So, so I really appreciate that. And again, I, I share in the excitement that, that again, you know, we have, again, we have these very dire scores around kindergarten readiness. And for me, it's, again, part of it, I think, I'm looking forward to seeing that pre-K to kindergarten connection and then building out that library. I really think, you know, if you look at, at some of the teaching, teaching strategies' gold data that, that they have in pre-K, I mean, I think kids do really well. But then once we, once we, they hit kindergarten, for some reason, you know, i- is it that the children are not kindergarten ready, or the kindergarten is not ready for our children? And what, 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 what I'm hearing today is that kindergarten is ready for our kids. And I, and I've always thought that way, because again, you know, with, with Teaching Strategy's goal, they use an observational assessment which really, again, measures the, you know, social emotional development, find motor physical development as well as cognitive development. And, and then we pull a couple of those elements away once they hit kindergarten, and I think we, we, we start with an incomplete picture of children, and specifically marginalized children, which is, you know, a mess. But, but again, what I'm hearing, what's promising for today is that, again, we, we are seeing that kindergarten is, is, is ready. So if children arrive so-called not kindergarten ready, that we have, we have, we have, we have strategies, we have approaches, we have curriculum that's actually going to meet their needs and going to get them to where they need to be. So this is exciting. So thank you for the work, Yolanda.
Thank you. And I think just one piece of clarification, the Words Their Way program was really trying to operate, was operating in that phonics and word study space for us. And our feeling is that, looking at the Colquins material and the people that have gone, is that that program is going to better support those skills for us. And so part of the pilot is to really run this and see, okay, are we fine moving one in and one out? And we also see a really nice tight connection to the reading workshop, so we see this is a better way to get at phonics for our students.
Teachers agree that it's more systematic, it's more explicit, and that it has a very, I mean, something that they, they want to see, is all the tools that they need for that type of instruction is there. But they, they're also seeing, and we saw, we talked to our coach, with Kathy, how the alignment, how excited teachers are when they see the connection to what they're teaching now and what they've been teaching before. So it's not that they're teaching in, you know, something completely new, it's that they're bringing with a new, different lens, that this needed, needed to be addressed, specific needs of children.
I heard Joey's comment earlier.
Yep.
They're realizing that the instructional moves that we learned while we were really digging into language workshop fit this perfect.
Fit this perfect, yeah.
Good. Any other questions?
I just wanted to thank you for considering our early childhood program here, and I think how important it is to give the teachers there an understanding of how they can best, better support their, their students and just feeling heard. So thank you for that, because I know that's above and beyond what, you know, what you're called to do. So just wanted to say thank you to you for, for all your work and for giving us those, those new lenses. And it's, it's, it's great to be able to celebrate our kids and to know that they're able to make this incredible kind of, of progress, right? Because, and, and celebration to our teachers for, for, you know, what they're able to do in kindergarten. And thank you for, for your support that you...
You can go and tell them now. Well, they've seen the data, but waiting to go and tell them. Thank you.
Fun, that is perfect for that. Yeah, I mean, I, I share in the excitement of my board colleagues, and, and I'm glad to see the cohort data. I do, that does make, I think, seeing the data just by grade level feels a lot more inconsistent than when you see the cohort. And I agree that, obviously, we need to see what's going on in second and third grade, but at least seeing that the K through one that we're seeing growth is, is encouraging. But I do, you know, I know this is based on DRA, which I know is something that we are phasing out, I believe, because DRA is not aligned with Common Core, correct?
Yes. So we are, we are piloting a new tool because we want to move to a new one-to-one, a literacy assignment, that, a literacy assessment that is better aligned to the Common Core.
So I'm wondering, and I know that we see the report on the, the schools that are piloting STEP, but highlight, like, would we see similar, like, incoming data that looks promising, or how does it compare?
Yeah, so what we can say about the STEP data is that we can see that there's very nice, there's good growth and good response to understanding around the assessment data between the first assessment window and the second assessment window. I don't want to, in this case, kind of like try to project one set of data across another. The STEP assessment has given us some really good information about curriculum. It's helped to feed some of the energy around the phonics adoption or phonics piloting, and it's allowing us to really get better at digging back into data to inform instruction. So I do, we saw very nice growth between the fall and the winter, but we are still learning how to use the tool, we're still learning how to interpret the assessment data, and so we still have work to do there before we can, before I think we're really comfortable digging in and reporting on that data.
And then, you know, knowing, we've talked a little bit about how, you know, next year or at the latest, the year after, we will have to adopt kids, the state mandated kindergarten assessment. How do we think that will, or have we given any thought to how that will align with these DRA results with STEP?
So we've done some outreach originally, you know, we've done some initial outreach, and that's going to, that needs to enter a planning process right now. The folks at the STEP assessment have responded back to my ask, and essentially, they're able to show where the information in the STEP assessment crosswalks over to the literacy competencies. And so part of what they're trying to elevate for the schools that give STEP and kids is, if you give STEP, this data can go right over into a national tool to report for some of the literacy competencies. But one of the things that we'll have to be sensitive to is, depending on the timing of, of taking on a new, any new assessment, be it literacy or kids, is what, what the timing is and how do we create space for people to learn and to administer those assessments in a way that is manageable and meaningful for the educators and for the, the results we gather.
And then my final question. I am just curious, you know, I, I see the, you know, there's the baseline averages overall for the district, but then we're looking at different baseline averages at each school and then, you know, again, for, based on racial demographics. And so, you know, I don't know if I'm just looking at this incorrectly, but it just feels like, you know, we... feels like, you know, we have maybe higher expectations for students at one school than we do at a different school because we're, we're analyzing them on a different baseline. Am I just interpreting this?
But the baseline is based on that, right?
What's that?
Yeah. So, the, what we did when we established this was that we took a look at what, essentially, we wanted to set a baseline average for each school.
Right.
And so, we took a five-year average and we took it for each of these subgroups. So, we're, we're comparing performance to a past average.
Right.
I, so, I think that is why, that's what you're picking up on there.
Right.
I really don't believe, you know, so, we're measuring whether we're making growth over an average from that school in the past. When we look at these schools, one, we're really trying to, you know, we don't say, gee, the school's at a 64, let's get them to a 66. We are in about accelerating growth regardless of school and student. And if anything, sometimes when we look at the data, you know, part of what Elizabeth highlighted in her slides was for the schools that, that had some of those lower averages, we try to be responsive and put more support in those places. That's where we put more reading specialists. We fact, we look at DRA scores at the end of the year. We look at MAP scores at the end of the year. And that goes into a formula to help figure out the reading specialist allocation. And we have, particularly, some of the coaches this year, we've spent, have spent more time in schools that have lower success rates around DRA than schools that have had higher success rates. And so, we really try to use that to inform where we do, do our work.
Okay. I guess just, you know, and that all makes sense. I get, particularly when we were, when looking at the breakdown by race, it just, you know, it feels almost a little bit like because the baseline maybe is lower for, for example, for black students than white students, the appearance is that we may have lower standards for accelerating growth there when really, we need to have.
So, the goal that we wrote around this particular work, which we report on to the foundation, is, has higher growth goals over the three-year period for black students and students that are not kindergarten ready than for the other student groups. And so, specifically, we wrote goals that showed greater percentages of learning for those groups than for the white students. And I believe there's also a greater goal for our Hispanic students. And so, that is specifically written in as a goal around this work.
Written into.
And I believe it was eight percentage points over three years. So, from the baseline average for our black students and for our students that are not kindergarten ready. And then, the other, then I think it's five and three for the other groups. But I am running off my memory right now. But it is higher for the subgroups that had lower historical performance.
And it might be that the numbers look different because there are some schools that have more students than others and that also might see the data look different. I'm thinking, I'm not sure that, because some students have more black students and, I mean, some schools have, right? Would that make a difference of what you're, from what you're saying?
Well, but it's a percentage meeting.
Yes.
So, I don't think it should make.
Yeah, it's not that.
And then, actually, one other question that Candace, who couldn't be here tonight, had a question about why, why does Willard have so many kids without K-ready data? So, I think.
The students that consist of the no K-ready data are disproportionately second language learners. And they're also disproportionately low income because I think there tends to be more, there's more fluidity in your housing situation, which means that you move from one school to another a little bit more often. Why Willard has a higher number than Walker, per se, is something that we need to dig into.
So, are these kids that are transferring into our district and just weren't there?
There are two different pieces. So, they're, the two largest groups in that data set are second language learners that still were so early in their language development when they arrived in 65. And the decision to give that initial Icel, they decided not to give that initial Icel screener. So, that's part of the group because of where they entered around their language skills. And then, the second piece of it, and that wouldn't necessarily be, that would not be our twee students because we have the opportunity for English and Spanish Icel. But the second group are students that are moving in and out of district. And we just don't have, because if they're not with us at the beginning of K, we don't have that particular data piece.
Yeah. I also pointed that, that it's an interesting that they have that many students.
Yeah. We just need to follow up on that.
We need to follow up on that.
Something's not quite right there. We'll have to figure out.
I had another question around the school data. So, we have some schools where it looks like K through 3 are all meeting growth benchmarks and some schools where it's nearly entirely K through 3 are not. And I'm wondering if there are any conjectures as to why that might be happening? And I hear you that for those schools that do have a lower proficiency, there are more coaching supports and instructional supports. Are we learning anything in terms of the gaps that may be leading to?
Yeah. I can, I can, because I'm at this, one of these schools, for instance, a Walker school, this is a school that I'm there like, you know, almost every day for different, but for sure, one day a week. There is some teacher movement that could be part of a new school leader as well. I mean, there are so many other variables as well. The supports, I can tell you the work that I see happening in, in most of the classrooms at that school is amazing. How one of the, the success stories that Donna was talking about comes from that school in terms of using the branching minds and following the MTSS protocol. But there are the things that have prevented, you know, the rest of the student population because I can see that the gap is not, they're not too far off from meeting benchmark across grade levels and across race demographics. So, that's, you know, some, I was, I was looking at that data as well as trying to understand it and see what, what could be some of the explanations for it. And it, you know, there are different variables that could play into, into that. That's just one instance.
Yeah. I think another possible connection is really the school work planning process that I believe runs. And a number of the schools that we see very strong growth in have a very, have a focus on using data to inform differentiation in small groups. And so, I think in some cases, there's a synergy between the school work and the district work in those spaces. And since there is a focus in the school, there's kind of the ongoing and added contact point and reinforcement. So, I think those are, there are some cases where there's some nice alignment of work. So, those are, those are a couple of things that come to mind. And then, what we are doing clearly around mid-year results here and with MAP is places where we see things that are concerning, we're following up with coaches and following up with principals to try to address concerns and see what else maybe we need to figure out and understand.
Now, just also say thank you. This is something that I would have been so over the moon about when I was teaching. And there were so many times where I felt like best practices were provided, but the supports in order to deliver on those best practices were not there. And it's a very thoughtful process of introducing new curriculum and instructional tools, but also providing the coaching and support. And I think the results demonstrate that it's a solid model as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. We know we have more work to do.
Okay. A lot more.
Not tonight, though.
And I think no other questions. So, with no more business, I adjourn this meeting at 10:05 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.